Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a request and I'm sorry, please state your name and your address.
Sure, Sean German, 1218 Tropook Road, North Hudson, Wisconsin, 54016.
Alright.
Listen on.
You have to have your mouth, you have to have your mouth closed to it.
There we go. This won't be awkward. Oh, everybody ready?
Don't worry, your time is not gonna start until we make sure that technology is in place here, which is important.
That's good, okay.
Alright, go ahead.
Um, I just came here to address the board. I know some of you probably are all, maybe all of you have gotten emails from me, um, probably in the last thirty days, um, probably more so the last week. And so I just wanted to go over some things that I'm hoping you all take into consideration. And so I'll go over, um, some of the policies the district has in place and currently what is happening on our route, essentially. So the last revision of the policies was in June of two thousand and eleven, so.
I'm sorry, June of?
Two thousand and eleven, June fourteenth of two thousand and eleven, according to Safeway's bus procedures on their website. Um, and I took it directly from procedure number three five two five point one. So generally elementary and middle school students may be required to walk up to a half a mile and high school students up to three quarters of a mile to a bus pickup location. From our door to the end of Tropook Road is more than three quarters of a mile long. And we don't have a long driveway. Um, Tropook Road North is three quarters of a mile long and has been recently surveyed as of February of two thousand and seventeen. Generally, students shall not be, this is a policy, should not be assigned to pick up points which would require walking on county highways, state roads, and heavily traveled roads. Based from what my, what direction the bus comes from, my children are, if dropped off, will be having to come out onto traffic on River Road, which is a busy road. This is a highly danger, this is highly dangerous and that is why the bus driver chose to drop off and pick up in a residence located at the corner of Tropook Road and River Road. Not one child lives in that residence or attends Hudson Schools. Although it's against district policy to turn around in a private residence, the driver made the most important decision when in terms of safety for my young children, we need more people making good decisions for our young children. Transportation, this is another policy, will be provided for regular riders of two daycare facilities, providing the daycare facility is located within the student's school attendance area. I currently run a childcare. Um, I have been doing childcare for exclusively almost ten years. So, um, so my children, okay, so these, okay, so I currently run a daycare for children living in Hudson School District in Holton's attendance boundaries, where my own children attend. So they would also need the same buses and transportation in or in the future. I'm just wondering who's going to come get these kids at the bus stop or to take them or bring them back? Yeah, I mean, you can have preschoolers. Grayson, who's four, will be going to the new four K program that Hudson has implemented and he cannot simply be walking through quarters of a mile by himself. Alone, um, if you've ever been on Tropook Road, it's hilly, it's got a curve, it's got some hidden and blind corners and hills. Um, and here's another policy, students with disabilities will ride regular transportation unless determined otherwise by an I E P team. Also, such students will be provided transportation according to the state law. I have two children currently in the elementary level that are on I E Ps that are in our district. Um, I just wanna know what the district will do to make good on the policies that are in place for my children and for all those children, children living on our road. If the township says that they won't make changes tomorrow night when I come before them, to allow buses to come down and turn around, where will the bus meet my children? Three quarters of a mile with the blind corners and hills is not safe for children to walk. We have bears out here too. Two came through the other day, just the day after school got out, about the time my children would be walking home from the bus. Icey roads is another factor. I cannot see my children get on and off. What if my children fall on the way home on the ice and need medical attention? I wouldn't know if they fell that far away and out of sight. A neighbor openly expressed that she'll, she had to quit work, stayed home because she could no longer provide safety for her then young children because of vicious dogs attack, attacking their children on the way home from the bus. The children had to carry metal batons in their hands to protect themselves. Now ask yourself, what parent wants to go through that? What if it was a bear? She cannot see her children get on and off that bus. And the district and township at that time did nothing. Your policies are supposed to be in place for the safety of students. Safeway didn't do nothing for us for six months. I called and pleaded with them back in December. Six months, my husband left work early, went to work late, came home, went back to work to accommodate just one bus stop and one pickup. Now it's gonna be three buses, six times. We just cannot accommodate this here and out. Most families cannot work, make their work schedules this way. You also need to realize this is the country out here and we have wildlife and strange cars and, you know, they just don't belong on our road. It's a dead end. Which is why I'm, I'm going to address that at the township tomorrow. You know, this is a huge concern with cars coming down that don't belong on our road. You know, in today's, today's reality, there's people following buses home from schools. And you live in a rural area, it wouldn't take much, that three quarters of a mile away when you can't see your kids, for your kids to vanish and you wouldn't know. I could call the district and say, well, they dropped them off. I don't know where my kids are. I just don't want that to happen. Let's see. I just need to know what the district's going to do and ensure that the policies that are in place are well thought out, not just for town kids, but also country and rural areas as well. We have a lot more dangers to tend to sometimes with the wildlife in the mix. Um, I always think the, the half mile that is, it's too far for country kids to walk, especially when parents cannot see their children get on and off the bus. You know, what do you think? What does the board think about these policies? My riders are eleven, nine, seven, four, and next year I'll have another four K are going to school. I did bring some of them with. They're all gonna need transportation. We have neighbors with young children that, and who will attend Hudson Schools in the next three years, two years actually. They were gonna need transportation. Ask yourself, would you send your young children in these age groups to walk on the road three quarters of a mile along alone? To their bus and back again? That's what the district is asking me to do with obstructions and blind spots and hills and animals and vicious dogs and strangers. My kids have been approached by strangers on this road already. Luckily, it's been neighbors that I did not know and generally concerned for their welfare as to why they're walking on the route on hot days. Ariana is seven. She was seen by a neighbor to be falling over with her heavy backpack on a ninety degree day, walking home from the bus stop, cause my husband could not be there cause he had work commitments. This is information I received from neighbors after talking to them the first time about a week ago. They said they were planning a family and that they were less than thrilled about the bus situation down here and thought that the bus should be coming down with such young children riding. I'm reaching out for the safety of my children because they don't have a voice in any of this. I think if I hadn't reached the district, this would continue and it would be allowed to happen. And as a parent, I'm not allow, you know, I can't allow this to, to happen and continue on this path for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school year. We depend on income just like all of you do. And we just cannot do the pickup and drop off six times a day. Like we have for the last six months. Thank you.
Thank you. I just note that I, you went beyond the five minutes, but I, I thought a couple of times that you were almost done, so I wanted to make sure you were finished, so thank you. Now, um, any other citizen requests to speak? Alright, so now we have a time on our agenda where the administration can respond to the request.
Just briefly respond, I've been made aware of the situation, I, with emails. Uh, I know that Andrea Volker has looked into the situation. I know Tom Stiles from Safeway has driven the road. We can't at this point safely get a bus down and back up that road. We, I mean, if the township decides to change what they're doing or change the road or put in some type of turnaround at the end or something like that, we would be more than happy to go down the road with the bus and drop off down there. But until that happens, we, we don't have any other options as far as safety goes. The board policies and procedures are, uh, the procedures are, the very first word in each of them is generally, this is what we try to do, uh, unless we have circumstances that we, we can't get within a half a mile of a house or we can't get within three quarters of a mile of a house. And so, um, I absolutely, uh, you know, have a tremendous amount of empathy for them and, and we're trying to figure out a situation. I know that they're going to the township. We've been asked to, to be at that. We, we tend to not go to other public municipalities and lobby on behalf of individuals because, uh, it creates challenges for us and then, you know, we wouldn't, it would not be advisable, uh, for the board to take a position on those things. But if, if the township does get that changed, uh, or they can do a turnaround, I believe is what it is, or a Y hammerhead turn or whatever it is, then we can get, and we can get a bus safely down there and turn around. We absolutely would pick up all the way down at that end. But as of right now, the school district doesn't have the ability to do road improvements and things along those lines on, uh, property that we don't have the ability to give buses to. So, um, there's not an ability for the board to really discuss this. This is not on the agenda. It's just an opportunity for us to, yeah, respond and, and we will continue to, uh, work with Sean to, to get feedback as to hear how the, the township meeting goes and if something changes, we'll make, we'll make those accommodations as best we can, so.
Alright. Thank you for coming and we will move on then to superintendent's reports.
Construction update, um, just to give you an update on the, on the construction projects. The middle school construction project, uh, is moving along, uh, and they are, have started the renovation phase of the inside of the building, uh, both Merlin and Excalibur houses, uh, in addition to the, uh, main office area. They had to move some things obviously as we cut through those corridors and then the art room upstairs, they're working through those items. We have had some conversations with Kraus Anderson because the work has been less than, um, expedient lately and so, um, they have been very responsive, uh, to work and to get more workers there. Um, so we are trying to get some of those, some of those situations solved. The parking lot at the middle school slash prairie site, uh, that work should start this week. It's still supposed, planned on being done August first. We do have resolution in the water that we got in the gym floor. Kraus Anderson, uh, their labors are responsible. They caused the first pipe burst and it caused, I think, was it thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of damage to him? Thirty-eight to forty thousand, so they'll be cutting the, you know, cutting the district a check for that amount. Rhino controls was responsible for some additional damages in another part of the floor, I think about twenty thousand dollars worth of damage, maybe fifteen, somewhere in there. And so when we start to look at that, we essentially have about two thirds of a new floor and one third of a twenty-five year old floor. So looking at, makes the most sense to then, um, essentially from a district standpoint, to pay the difference as part of one of our summer projects to just have the whole floor redone. Uh, because what's happened is we don't quite know how far the water went under and if, if it got underneath the plastic and you could start tearing into this floor and you never quite know where to, where you're gonna end up stopping. So that floor's been sanded already, I think twice it's been refinished, so it's just better to take it out, put it in. We think we have it all scheduled here to be done before school starts, but we're working, working through some of those items. The, um, high school site is, is moving along. Uh, those that were on the construction committee tour a week and a half ago, uh, it is definitely under construction on the inside. I would say that is, uh, maybe the understatement of the century. It, they are, they're really working hard. We, we're about four and a half weeks from school starting, so they have a lot of work to do in the next four and a half weeks. The good thing is we're starting to see things go from demolition to being built back and putting back together. Uh, the stadium project, um, the rooms inside the building underneath are, are being completed. Plumbing is being completed, the walls are in and, and things along those lines. Bleachers start on Wednesday. Uh, you'll start seeing the bleachers go up in the stadium. You'll see some of the retaining walls, uh, that went in. Couple of things that came up, uh, so you may or may have not seen the drone footage of the high school site on Facebook that's going around. So, uh, somebody, I think Andrea was showing it to me on her phone and I go, uh-oh. Because, uh, when it zoomed out, um, the lines on the practice fields were not right. And so I was gone for about a week between meetings and some vacation over the Fourth of July. So when I came back, went on, so we went out there with, uh, project managers from Kraus Anderson and looked at the fields and yes, the lines were not right. They had the lines on the wrong softball field. Uh, so, uh, called the turf company and they have already, uh, they had to shave out the lines and, and his initial response was, can you just switch which field would be your game field down the road? And I said, no, we can't because we don't have room along the one side. And not trying to be difficult, but we kinda, you know, so it was one of those things where, you know, it's not that I, I tend to pay a lot of attention to a lot of different things on that site and so catching that now is better than catching it after they already had the rubber and sand in. Um, why it wasn't caught by somebody else, I don't know. Uh, and then the drive, driving up the building, um, you know, where we now have the stone pillars and things like that, the bottom row of stone should always be at least two feet above the grade, so above the sidewalk or whatever, cause when you put a six foot fence on top of it, it maintains an eight foot height wherever. So when you look at the, um, stone going up that drive, it actually is too low. And so one of the things pointed out is that we need another row of, of, uh, of the stone across there. Uh, then Kraus went back to the plans and realized, yes, um, I was right on that, that we needed to maintain a minimum of eight feet from grade. And so they were working with the wall contractor to get another row of stone put in there all the way up. Uh, so working through some of those things, so I gave them a little bit of a hard time. I said, jeez, I'm gone for a week. The big things that got done were the walls and the fields and they weren't right, but, uh, Kraus Anderson has done an outstanding job for us and, uh, just to give them a little bit of a hard time is kinda fun. So, um, so we're working through those items. The auditorium's cranking along. They have gutted everything in the auditorium at this point and are already starting to build things back up. Uh, the seating, fabric and final selection that's happening, I believe tomorrow, the, um, uh, they're already starting to build back the inside of the building. The front of the building has been removed. They've started pouring all the footings and foundations for the new addition. They're working their way out from the northwest to the, uh, kinda the southeast. Um, the retention ponds are in. Uh, they'll be going and repairing, uh, Vine Street where we had to widen it as required by the city. Uh, the tennis courts, some people ask, hey, the tennis courts look like they're not level. The tennis courts are not level. They're at a one percent grade and that's so that they drain. If you try to put them completely flat, they end up pooling, water pools on them when we have rains and when that happens, that's when you end up with the, uh, coating that starts to flake off. So the one percent grade right now looks pretty obvious cause there's a retaining wall behind them, uh, that, uh, that is completely level. If that wall wasn't there, you'd never notice the grade, uh, grade change. The one percent grade is the same grade we use on the track and the same grade we use on the fields and things. So, um, each individual court, you shouldn't feel it and it's well within the specifications, but I know some people in the community will ask, uh-oh, the, the tennis courts are not level, but that's how they were designed. Uh, so we're working through some of these things, working through change orders and, and other items. Right now, we're in a pretty good spot, um, so far. I mean, we're only in probably about fifteen percent of the building remodel, uh, and no real big surprises. So that's always a, that's, that's a good situation. Couple asbestos situations that we didn't realize we had asbestos and we've gotten those things abated, uh, but we're, we're just kinda working through that. So, any questions as it relates to construction?
Mr. President?
Rob?
So Nick, as far as the grade goes, I know the USTA, you know, it's essentially a, a one inch every ten feet drop. That one percent fits within that, is that right?
It fits within, we, we are not regulated by the U S, uh, Tennis Association. We're regulated by the National High School, uh, National Federation of High School Athletics, so NFHS. And so, and the W I A. So there may be things that are different from the United States Tennis Association than what we're, than what we do. So, um, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. What I know is our plans conform to the standards in which our kids are expected to play. So that's all I, that's all I know.
Fair enough, yep.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay.
My second report is legislative. Um, as you probably are aware, we're kind of an impasse when it comes to the budget, uh, which is kinda shocking considering one party holds all three branches. Um, but, uh, the big thing, uh, as we work through some of this, they use a sports analogy, kinda in the bottom of the ninth and anticipate some extra innings. We don't see an impasse being settled quite yet. Um, because essentially what's happened is the transportation situation is creating a stalemate. Um, I think, uh, the House would like to see a gas tax and the governor doesn't want to and I think the House is basically saying, if you want your education plan, you're gonna agree to a gas tax, uh, and a variety of other things. Um, but, uh, the K twelve stuff is not the stuff that's causing the stalemate. It's the, it's the stuff outside of there. The, as we kinda work through some of these different things, um, if the budget's late, so we don't have government shutdowns, so for example, it's now in July, so we're in a new fiscal year. We don't have government shutdowns at state level. What it does is it automatically maintains the same spending levels as the previously set budget. So it, it's unlike the federal government where they actually shut down without continuing resolutions. The state, we just basically continue to operate at the previous levels until they, they come back with something else. It looks like, it looks like, uh, the strings are gone with the two hundred two oh four. It looks like it's probably going to be the two hundred two oh four. We feel pretty good about that. The low revenue ceiling is something that they've talked about. Uh, right now it's at ninety-one hundred, it's the low revenue ceiling. They were talking about raising it to ninety-three hundred and then ninety-four hundred and then a hundred every year after that. Originally, the House was asking for a, go from ninety-one hundred to ninety-eight hundred to help the low spending districts. The thing you gotta remember, uh, we are considered a low spending district. Raising that low revenue ceiling really increases our under levy. So if you're a low spending district and you're maxing your levy out, raising that, um, that low revenue ceiling basically just gives you more authority to tax. Well, we don't even take advantage of all the taxing authority we have now, so it's not a tremendous help for us. We would rather have the two hundred two oh four in state aid. Uh, open enrollment, they're talking about, um, adding some additional dollars to the open enrollment amount, a hundred dollars each year. Sparsity aid, that doesn't really impact us. The referendum stuff, uh, looks like they, there's a lot of support for re, um, restructuring referendums to twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. Even on the odd years where there's not a fall general election, they would have a, essentially a coinciding date with that. Um, I guess my take on that is, is coming from a state that basically had that in place already, it wasn't, it wasn't a terrible thing. You're typically not going to, you know, if you have a failed referendum, to be able to turn around and pass a successful referendum quicker than six months is gonna be pretty difficult to do. Uh, the other thing is, is, um, we know, uh, even though some districts do it, we know that you have a better chance of passing a referendum on a regularly scheduled election date than a special. Um, and so districts that try to pass them on specials actually have less of a chance of passing it than if they just do it on a regular April date or a regular November date. Couple of things that are still unresolved, but it does look like the energy efficiency exemption is more than likely gonna go away to some extent, um, or phase out. Uh, it doesn't impact our district at all because we don't levy to the max, so it has no meaning for us. So that's why we don't talk about it. They are talking about changing the special education voucher and open enrollment items. Uh, this is something that's somewhat interest, you know, we keep an eye on because being a large district with not a lot of large districts around us, what happens sometimes, especially students that have a high level of need, um, that, that would like to open enroll into Hudson because we have certain specialized services, uh, the, right now it's twelve thousand five hundred dollars or, uh, that we get reimbursed from the sending district. But if you think about if we had a student that had a tremendous amount of needs and they needed a one-on-one associate or potentially a nurse or something along those lines with them all the time, um, you know, we, it wouldn't be unheard of to generate fifty, seventy, a hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses. But we'd only get reimbursed twelve thousand from that district and not until we hit, is it thirty thousand or thirty-five thousand for high cost reimbursement from the state. The district is still eating quite a bit of, quite a bit of cost there. Um, it looks like there is the potential to go back to a model where it's a direct bill. So basically what the costs are would go back to the sending district, which essentially what happened is down in, uh, from what I understand, down in the southeast part of the state, you had some districts that were kind of abusing that or they felt like it was being abused where they were billing tremendous amounts of money back to some of the smaller districts that didn't have the services and they felt like they didn't have a voice to be able to make those determinations. Uh, I think the problem is people sometimes underestimate the cost to educate some of our students that have some of the highest level needs. Uh, so we look, we're looking at that. The other thing that's unresolved is the voucher expansion program. Um, they are looking to try to expand vouchers to three hundred percent the poverty level. That, um, starts to get up there to a family of four, like seventy-five, seventy-five or eighty thousand dollar household income. I mean, that was never the intention of vouchers. It was to help, uh, families that were stuck in locations where they had poor public schools and no way to have any alternatives. But you start getting into some of those, um, it could start to have some impact on Hudson. Currently, we do not have vouchers per se. Is that correct, Tim? Um, you know, even though we have two parochial systems, we don't have anybody taking advantage of the voucher system. We do however, pay a premium to the Milwaukee School Choice voucher program. It's about, uh, I think three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars every year of state aid that we lose that goes to Milwaukee Public Schools voucher program. That, if that program wasn't in place, that would be additional state aid that, that Hudson would get. So everybody's paying a piece of that. Couple of bills to kinda keep an, uh, keep an eye on, um, the public proceedings of, of, uh, meetings held by certain gov, uh, publications. So it looks like more than likely there's some support that, um, they'll eliminate the requirement for, uh, having to post things in the paper. Because what's happened with, with some districts, especially rural districts, it's hard to find a paper of record or the cost just starts to become extremely, uh, excessive. Uh, they're even thinking about going one step further, um, and saying class one and class two notifications may be able to be handled on your website as well. Uh, I guess I would, at this point, I would advocate to the board that we would continue to publish our notices as long as we have a paper to publish in because I just, uh, we wouldn't want anybody to accuse us of, of not trying to be transparent. And so if we have a paper to publish in, I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing to do. It is, it does have an expense. Uh, it's, it's not cheap to do, so. Two bills coming up to authorize a school board member to refuse their salary. Right now, it's against the law for a school board member to refuse their salary. You have to take your salary. You can donate it to other things, but you can't not take your salary. Uh, so that's apparently a, a big thing. There is some things with school start date and how this'll, and how this'll work. We're just kinda keeping an eye on it. The, uh, there's still the fact that people want to allow anybody to be able to carry on school property concealed weapon. Um, it's a slippery slope, um, because, you know, there are probably some people, um, that may be able to handle that, but there are also quite a few people that we'd prefer if they didn't have a firearm, uh, on district property even if, even if the law said they could. Uh, so, uh, that's a, uh, it's a kind of a slippery slope on those. Couple of more items just wanna touch on. They are talking about potentially going to a bidding environment, a competitive bid environment for school districts. Currently, we don't have competitive bid rules. We have, um, proposals. And so cities, counties, state government has to do competitive bids, is that right, Tim? We had, we had competitive bid process in Iowa. The, the biggest thing is it, it, it can drive cost up and make some things more difficult. Depends on what they set the thresholds at. And, you know, if they start to set the thresholds where we have to go through competitive bid process for anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, then you start to require bid bonds and things along those lines and bid bonds have a cost to them and usually the contractors don't just throw that in for free. They build that into their, their cost. Um, so that's, that's one of those things that we'll have to kinda keep an eye on and see. I think what we've been doing has worked out pretty well, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on those things. And then, you know, as we work through, um, you know, it's just, those are kinda the big points. I mean, there's a ton of other education related bills that, um, tend to not be, uh, real meaningful as far as impact to our district. They apply to maybe other districts and things like that as far as might be sparsity aid or transportation aid that we wouldn't qualify for, things like that. Um, but the legislature is still in full swing and, um, uh, last time they met, or the last time they finished- or the last time they finished a budget, which was in 2015, it was 95 pages long and it was full of a bunch of law changes. So it wasn't just the budget. Uh, and so that's something that we're kinda keeping an eye on because the governor and the legislature tends to throw a lot of things in the, um, it's kinda like an ominous bill, uh, budget bill at the end, so. That's legislative update. Any questions?
Questions for Nick. Heather?
Nick, I think I saw news about, it's not legislative, but judicial, the Supreme Court decision about the open records ruling. Does that impact?
Open, open means law?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Does that impact our district at all or the board or the district?
Yeah, I mean, we're still waiting for interpretation. I'm attending the school law, um, Wisconsin school law update is coming up in, uh, two weeks. I'll be there and get a kind of interpretation there. But the basic, the gist of it is, is if the board creates a committee or sets a, you know, we have like this, uh, task force or things like that, they basically need to be treated as if it's a separate board committee. So you'd have to post the meetings like you would a board meeting. You'd have to keep minutes and things along those lines, even if that committee is made up of only school personnel. So I think in the past, so like, for example, I think, uh, when you guys set up the, um, process steward team, that was set up in a way that would follow those guidelines. But if you all of a sudden said, and this is what happened in Appleton, they board directed the curriculum department to review something, set up a task force on curriculum or something along those lines, um, they argued, uh, and successfully won that that should be considered an open, uh, subject to open meetings and open records. Um, which typically, you know, the concern was, we don't know how narrow that, that ruling is because, you know, it'd be awfully hard for every time we meet to discuss something administratively that we have to post it 24 hours in advance. So we're trying to get what the interpretation is. We don't wanna skirt the law, but we think right now, at least preliminarily, it looks like if the board says, "Set up a task for, for us to do this" or "Set up a committee to do this," then that would be subject to open means law.
Yep. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, then we move on in the agenda. And, uh, my report's very brief. I was just adding, uh, the regional meeting to my personal calendar. So talking about WASB trainings and the convention. Uh, first of all, when I showed up for tonight's meeting, it was presented with mail. I presume that Tim Minor got. And that includes the resolutions that were adopted by the delegate assembly. And Rob, you attended that delegate assembly and participated in discussion on some of these items.
I did.
I think I did that my first year on the board as well, and it involves, maybe the first couple of years, but it just basically involves going through the resolutions with the superintendent and, you know, finding out. Many of them don't apply to us, just like the legislative updates, they don't apply to us, but then some do have some impact. And, um, uh, some, uh, resolutions are, um, can be considered extreme and some are kinda milquetoast, and so they gotta sort through that. But I've got all of the resolutions that were passed at last year's convention. Anyone wants to have reading. And the reason, um, I think that they send this is to, one, just recap what was done last year. And then there are some school boards that are very active in their resolutions. And, um, those have to be submitted by September 15th. So I'm saying it now and we have a record with the video that I announced it in July. And so anyone who wants to work on that for the next, uh, 60 days or so could come up with a resolution that would be, um, something we would probably pass at our September meeting, um, and then submit that, um, for inclusion. Again, the convention, Nick, is that generally it's the third week in January?
It is in January.
And is it, uh, the 17th? Yes, that's what I have. 17th, 18th, and 19th. Sometimes there's pre-meetings on that Tuesday.
If that's what it is, I will, uh...
Yeah, 16th, uh, 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th, looks like, and I would assume the 15th. We got five Mondays in January.
15th is, uh, Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So anyway, I'm putting that on, uh, it's kind of a bug in everyone's ear to, um, be looking at that, looking at their ca-, um, calendars and trying to make that convention because I think that there's been, I've missed one and that was due to a, you know, personally, a family health situation. But otherwise I try to make those. I think they're pretty, um... They are. They're in January. And, um, there's a lot of opportunity to mingle with, uh, boards from other districts, learn, you know, similar issues and, um, problems. Last year, we put on a seminar. We actually kicked the thing off at 8:00 AM with our seminar. It was really well-attended and heard people come up to me for the next two days afterwards and appreciate it. So I don't know if we're on board to make any presentations this year. I think we're, our plates are pretty full, but if you guys...
Two, two we've submitted.
All right, good. Um, well, I, I appreciate that and I think that helps that your involvement with the State Administrators Association, so. Um, other than that, I also wanna point out with, when it comes to WASB, um, trainings, that there are webinars that we can take and, um, they're regularly scheduled. Um, a couple a month, sometimes one a month, but I'm just looking now. There's one on pupil records on August 2nd, one on school district referendums, legal and policy considerations. That's also in August. So I just encourage board members to go on the WASB, um, website. And if you register, obviously you wanna go through Tim Minor because if you're interested in a webinar, maybe other board members are and if we can join, attend, that's fine, but, um, it's not mandatory that you be in the same location. Yes, you can. And these are little one-hour webinars in which, um, you, you can sign up for four for a hundred bucks or something like that and then you get member recognition points, um, as well a- as you do when you attend the convention and the regional meeting, which is my next, um, discussion point. For those, some who have not attended a regional meeting yet, again, um, I'm not gonna lie, it's not the most exciting thing necessarily, but it is, um, good for our district to get visibility. They recognize districts that have majority or unanimous, uh, participation among their board members. It's in Eau Claire, so it's not, it's about the same distance as Turtle Lake, I guess, but, um...
Do you have a date, Jamie?
Yeah, that is October 24th, uh, 4th. So it's October 24th and if we wanna go to the pre-regional meeting seminar, which I think Nick and I did that first year you were superintendent. And, um, it was really in-depth. I mean, whatever their subject matter is for 90 minutes, they really get in the weeds on it. This year, the topic happens to be the budget, which I think they could easily spend 90 minutes talking about. If you're interested in going, if no one says they're interested in going on that, then we would leave a little bit later. I think dinner is one of those things that's usually at 5:30, 6 o'clock and then after that. So it's October 24th.
Is it like the one we went to? I thought it was in September.
I know. They start in September and they rotate them around the states.
Sue, you went and you took a picture of Jamie getting his...
Oh, that's really...
Yeah.
And they did have the budget, a budget report there.
Yeah. So it's in Eau Claire, October 24th in that evening. So those are dates to be thinking about. State convention, June, uh, January 16th, 17th that week. And then the, um, the, uh, regional meeting, October 24th, webinars in between. And I'm not sure when the next thing is up in Turtle Lake. Generally, those are about a couple of times a year, but we had good attendance at the last one. So appreciate that. All right.
Go to, uh, Green Bay this weekend.
All right. That's, you're, you're going to Green Bay this weekend? I was gonna ask because it said that there was a recap of the, uh, Summer Institute was in July. So is there something else that's replaying in August?
I don't know.
Okay.
There's some things in the program that I might be, I have a tendency far familiar, but it's, uh...
Okay, so...
It doesn't hurt me to hear things over.
Yeah, well, if folks wanna do an event recap, for instance, the Summer Leadership Institute recap, that was July 14, 15. You can go on the WASB website and I'm on it right now. Okay. So, very good. All right. Any questions about tho- those opportunities and, all right? Hearing none, moving on to reports. We have one report. I assume Tim Erickson, unless Nick, you have an introduction to it?
Well, it's just, Tim has a very brief report on the preliminary budget update. Kerry told me to say brief report on the budget update.
Oh, wow. He stole my thunder. I, I, I was already there. This is gonna be really short, you know, as, as Nick said, they're still, still wrangling around with the budget. So, um, we did, I mean, the good news is with, with this latest update, there aren't, there aren't a lot of changes. But the good news is that DPI released their aid estimate, the July 1st estimate, and that's kind of our first look at how we think we did trying to project out where that aid, uh, number's gonna come from. So, uh, if I, if I direct your attention now to that first section, line 621 equalization aid, that is now at 21,967. So it's about a $28,000 increase. It's, it's good news. It was close. We'd love to see it higher than that, but, uh, I mean, the real, uh, the real number comes in in October and that one, that one could vary just based on a, several different factors. But, uh, right now, that's, that's a good, um, that's a good change to see that, uh, so close and, and not going, uh, not being a lot less than what we have projected out.
So is my math correct? It looks like we're losing $2 million in equalization aid between here, uh, this year and...
Yes, that's right. We're about, yeah, we're, yeah, we were about eight, yeah, about 8.3% down. And that's, again, that's, that's the rough estimate until October when we get that final number. Um, we do, and, you know, we haven't adjusted anything. As Nick was saying, the per pupil aid is, is at, uh, we're thinking that's gonna come in around the 200 and 204 uh, for each of the two years. Uh, but, you know, we, rather than changing all these numbers and changing them back again, we'll let, we'll let that legis-, the legislature and the governor play out.
It's still sitting at 150. Is that right, Tim?
That's still sitting at 150, yep.
So we have an update to...
Yeah. So, yeah, so we had some adjustments under, under the salaries and benefits side, um, as we're finalizing some of the things there. Um, other than that, uh, levy at the very top, property taxes, uh, went, uh, 11.8% versus 11.6 at our first, at our first preliminary look at the budget. Uh, bottom line, still general fund surplus or deficit, that's the 1,243 and that's, that's what we're using, um, again, our balancing is the 4K program. So whatever we're estimating and projecting, uh, that program to run, uh, that, so we're not levying anything there, that is the, that's the deficit budget. So, um, pretty, uh, you know, pretty stable at this point. We'll have, we'll, so we'll see some more changes as we go through. I mean, a- as the legislature completes their work, we'll see that, see some of those numbers start to change. So hopefully on the upswing. So, um, I had a really preliminary discussion with the Department of Revenue just trying to get a handle on where they thought, uh, property values are going to be and, you know, um, they couldn't tell me exactly. They could give me some numbers and I just kinda had to work through it myself. But I think, uh, we're probably looking at, uh, a total increase, so economic value increase, which is appreciation and, uh, new construction together across, across the district, across all municipalities. We're probably looking at it somewhere around a five and a half percent increase range, which, um, is right about where we set it, which is good. Could be a little higher than that, could be a little lower, but, uh, that was the, that was the raw data I got from the Department of Revenue. Uh, it's kinda put together and check, gonna do a mid-year check here. Uh, we'll get more information on that in August. So, all right, so I think I'm overrunning my time. I'll, I'll wrap that up unless there are any questions.
Well, we haven't reached the question part, so, um, board members, um, any questions that you have? I just wanted to emphasize, so the, with that, uh, per pupil aid, the categorical aid possibly coming in at 200. We've discussed this at previous meetings, but folks who are watching now for the first time won't know. But you conservatively had estimated it to be 150 since we heard that number from at least one important legislator, that being the Speaker of the Assembly, said that that may be where it's at. But if it does end up at the 200, it would be, mean that the increase that you're projecting now would be another 25% on top of that.
Right, that's correct, yep.
And as far as the projected deficit, um, we would, we are intentionally trying to keep it in that 1.2 million range because that's roughly what kind of aid we're gonna get when it comes to the pre-K reimbursement.
Right, well, yeah, that's, so, yeah, well, yeah, that's, that's delayed aid, so that'll come in later. But, uh, like, like we said, um, the institute program, we wouldn't have any taxes levied, um, for that program. So that's, that's what the program costs this year because of the timing of the aid coming the next year and the cost coming this year, um, we have that deficit. So we'll replenish that when that aid comes in, uh, next year.
So if we, if we get that extra 200,000 roughly, I know it's more than that, but I just wanna say a 200,000 more in, in categorical aid, we could use that towards, uh, reducing the property tax increase.
Absolutely, yes, yep. Continue to buy down the mill, right?
That's good. All right. Any other questions then from board members? All right. And we will go through this one more time before we, uh, bring this to the annual meeting in September, correct?
Yeah, we might, we might go through it twice. As soon, if the legislature finishes up things, we'll, we'll bring, if they finish up early, uh, or earlier than we were thinking, uh, we'll bring another update to you and then, uh, we'll do one towards the end of August so that you've got, uh, we've got annual meeting information in front of you for the annual meeting.
That's good. That's always appreciated. Okay. Then, um, that concludes all the reports, what contrast to, uh, the last two months. I will now move on to topics for action, um, which, uh, we've got a consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move approval of the consent items that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,810,000, $35.83.
Motion by Rob. Second by Kerry. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The action of the consent items, uh, pass. And now we move on to academic standards identification and notification. This has been an annual thing for, what, three years now? Three, four years? So, um, typically Sandy gives this presentation. Just Nick wants to talk more.
Nope, nope. Sandy will give this. Again, it's just a brief, really brief presentation, only I think three slides.
Right. The, the slides actually are pretty much a remake of the past two years. We're staying with the Wisconsin State Academic Standards for our core areas that we're responsible for. The only change I made in the next, uh, slide, Tim, is simply that we do reference, as a part of our review process, we are looking at national standards, especially in the area of science and social studies. Um, I've been in contact with the state consultants with DPI and science and social studies and that's what they also recommend. So it's simply referencing that the core academic standards are, are Wisconsin academic standards, but we are referencing to make sure that we're lining. Um, it's, it is anticipated that the state will be moving towards a blend with the national science standards as well as incorporating some of the social studies. So we wanna be, um, proactive and make sure we're lined up with both the state and national standards.
And so when it comes to a motion, are we just, um, adopting the recommendation, being the, the two-sentence recommendation there?
Yep.
Well, first of all, before we do the motion, is there any questions of Sandy? I noted that in the materials on, when it was sent to all board members on Friday, there's a link that then goes back to our school district website. So there's transparency here. Anyone who wants to know about the standards in the district, you know, can read up on it. So there's, uh, some FAQs there and if people had further questions, they are always welcome to contact Sandy.
And that's part of the requirement as well.
All right.
Yep. So are these standards something that we must enact?
You, you have to have an, you have to have academic standards in the district. And since we don't, no longer have state standards that we're required to do, that each district is required to adopt their own set of standards, but we basically maintain the Wisconsin academic standards.
Mr. President, I have a question for...
Okay.
Um, now, uh, on, in the second slide, it says the specific content areas that must be addressed.
Correct.
Um, mathematics, science, so on. So does that imply that there are other areas that we also address a- as far as, um...
Correct. Those lists are, are required in statute. And then any other discipline, again, we follow the state academic standards and then also reference art. So I know with fine arts, we're also looking at those national art standards as well.
Cause I, I went online to see what some of the other standards were and...
Yes.
And some of the humanities areas are in there, music and visual arts and so on. So I just was curious, um, if some of those might also be included, but not, but they're not a part about what we have to prove that must be addressed. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Otherwise I would entertain a motion to adopt. Otherwise I would entertain a motion to adopt.
I move that, uh, move that we adopt the, uh, Wisconsin Act fifty-five, um, academic standards.
So you're, you, that we adopt the, the administration's recommendation for seventeen eighteen?
Administration's recommendation for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
All right. All right, motion by Sue, second by Heather. Any further discussion then? With that motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? We have adopted pursuant to our statutory duty. All right, moving on to policy eight fifty-one, advertising and sponsorships. Again, this was something that was discussed in detail at our work session, and I believe, is it Andrea is presenting this, or is it Tracy, combination?
I'll give you an introduction to this.
All right, Nick, you give us the introduction.
So what, what we'd be asking tonight is to have you waive the first reading and approve on second reading. And this also includes now not just policy eight fifty-one, but also includes the procedures eight fifty-one point one.
The process.
Process, okay.
So that's what, what Tim is handing out is the process.
And, uh, so the intro is, uh, for, to do that, um, waiving of the first and adopt on second reading, which this is really the second meeting that we've been addressing this issue. But the reason is we have a short summer this year and we have an early school year. We have a stadium that's in the process of being built and we have advertising space that potentially could be filled. So that was all part of that discussion. This time I would, uh, entertain either questions or a motion to adopt, or a motion, um, pursuant to the recommendation, which is to waive first reading and adopt on second. And I note that, uh, with the silence in the room, we have board members that are reading. And this advertising sponsorship approval process, um, these rates, are they set in stone, Tracy? Or are they what suggested to start at and then see what happens with the market?
Currently, that's what we're suggesting. I do have some, uh, at, one call into the Hudson Hockey Association to see if these are comparable to what they're using in the, uh, arena there. We just would like to be consistent.
And I would just, um, emphasize that this advertising and sponsorship approval process is just that, it's a process. The board adopts the policy, but the board is not engaged in setting the specific ads, the dimensions, the font or color or anything like that. That's, we're delegating that to the district and be consistent with the general board policy on this issue.
Mr. President, may I ask a question? What, where will, what will the funds go for?
The funds would go back to, um, we, we've talked about using those funds to support athletics. So one of the areas that we know, uh, that we have a need in is the, uh, the fitness center and the equipment for the fitness center, so, um.
So that's, that's an example of a short-term need.
Correct.
And that would allow us to, um, take money from, directly from what's being raised on advertising space for athletics, for athletics, as opposed to, and giving us more money than for academics and support academic programs in other areas.
So we would, we would use this money for one-time expenditures. We wouldn't pay salaries out of this money. Primarily this money would be used for things like, for example, we did not plan for any money in the referendum budget to equip the fitness facilities. That's both, you know, physical education and, um, athletics. And so, for example, the scoreboard could generate close to forty-eight thousand dollars a year. We could say, okay, we are, um, gonna take a loan from ourselves to get the equipment in there when the building opens and use these revenues to repay the general fund, uh, the monies that we use to buy the equipment. It could also be in the fine arts. If there's some advertising on programs, it could go to fine arts programs. But the one thing that, uh, as we, as we work, uh, uh, through this, it, um, uh, the, the majority of the funds, uh, and the intent of the policy is to use the funds to provide access or to provide things for our kids that may otherwise, we might not be able to provide to the district or may create a hardship, uh, for those kids as well, so.
One other question?
Yes.
Um, you've got on the bottom, a single performing arts event. Now, I'm assuming that some of this mark or this advertising stuff could possibly be for something in, that's being held in the auditorium?
Correct.
So those funds, if you sell some, add five hundred dollar space for something in like on an event brochure or something, that money would then go to the arts, would not go to the athletics.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we'd, it'd be more accounting procedures for Tim and his, uh, crew, but we would try to keep the pots of money so that they're not mixed together too much, but.
Yeah, I think that's an important thing, to keep the performing arts money separate from the athletic money that you're bringing in from this type of thing.
But there's short-term needs and then there's going to be long-term needs. I mean, even the, the brand-new sound system we're going to have come this next year is going to eventually need to be replaced someday.
Right.
The artificial turf eventually is going to have to be replaced someday.
Something to keep in mind, we typically would not, um, have it be like this performance raised this money, so it's this group. Or, or football gets this money because it happens to be on a football slash soccer scoreboard. I mean, we technically would go in generality, so if we're going to raise money in the fine arts, it would support all of the fine arts. If we're going to raise money in athletics, we'd support all of athletics. Uh, because we have certain areas and we have certain sports and we have certain areas in fine arts that don't have the ability to generate revenue. For example, um, the art department, it's very difficult to generate revenue in an art show as, as easily as it is to generate revenue through a, uh, performance, a musical performance or a, or theatrical performance. Similarly, it's very difficult for us to generate advertising revenue for golf, uh, as it may be for us to generate advertising revenue for basketball or football. So we just, I guess the intent would be we would keep it within those kind of areas, general areas. But the one thing we want to make sure is that people don't think that, well, this advertisement was up during the football game, so therefore the football gets all forty-eight thousand dollars. No, what would happen is we would use that for money, you know, use that money to enhance athletics or physical activity, things along those lines. So it starts to become a very big territorial situation and that's what we try to keep it from happening.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The, uh, it, it's not clear to me in this from a rate perspective. I know some districts where we say rate, so does the sponsor then provide us the, the graphic and then we're responsible for the printing and all of that? Or is it solely they're paying for the space and they're responsible for the banner or the?
Correct. It's just the space.
Okay, it is a suggestion, and I don't know if there's an opportunity to, uh, edit this, but you know, perhaps that might make sense to, to add.
Certainly.
As a thought.
And one of the things, reasons why we just, we felt that the, we felt that the rates were steep enough that it would more than cover any incidental costs associated with some of those things as Rob said. But the other thing is, is these rates are pretty short-term, you know, so a lot of times you worry about, okay, I'm going to sell a five-year piece of advertising for a banner and it's going to have to be replaced four times over the five years because of the weather. These are primarily things that are short-term, short-term burst of things. And so that's kind of why we set the, the rate as high as we did on certain things to cover those costs and then still be able to generate the revenue needed. Because we wouldn't want them to print, let's say, the programs for the play. We have to print the programs no matter what, so. But we can definitely, uh, you know, kind of work through that. And the other thing is by us kind of dictating that, we, we get to kind of have a little bit more, more control over what that looks like versus somebody showing up with their banner and they want it hung up.
So to confirm, we, this does cover that printing or it does not?
It would cover the printing like within the program that Nick is describing, but if, uh, somebody wants to put a banner up in a ball field.
Scoreboard.
Well, the scoreboard is electronic.
Well, it's, or the decals that go on the screens, that would cover that.
That would be ours.
That would be.
But banners, they would more than likely pick up that cost, but we would review them first. They wouldn't just be able to go out and produce it on their own without it being approved prior.
Certainly. So clarity here, just, it may help, may not. Um, the other, uh, quick question I have is, we know here number six, bi-annual advertising sponsorship rates that the board would review. Um, we're not limited to the bi-annual, right, if we choose to.
You can, you can say to us, hey, add to the agenda. We want to talk about advertising rates and we'll add it to the agenda. It's just what that does is it sets the minimum standard that at least every two years, we need to get these rates in front of you. But if you want to look at them annually or every six months, um, I can't imagine that you would, but potentially annually. But, uh, you know, and one of the things that would happen is it falls and we say, hey, our rates are too high. Uh, we're not getting any advertising. We need to bring this ready. We need to lower them or something along those lines.
Could we add, add a minimum then to number six?
Well, that's what the policy is.
Yeah.
It always, the policy always sets the minimum and you always have the opportunity to bring it up sooner.
Right, and when you say number six, we are not approving this, this process. We're not approving that tonight. We're only approving the policy that's going to then create a process. This is an example of a process and if we need to tweak the process, we can do that without having to change, major change to the policy. But just point of clarification, in adopting this policy and allowing advertising sponsorships in our schools, what we're not attempting to do at all is to supplant or replace fundraising that goes on throughout all our activities in all our schools. This is intending to supplement, but not supplant or replace.
But going back to Rob's original question, the very last line in the, in the policy that you are approving does talk about bi-annual, um, advertising sponsorship rights. So in the policy, it does say that. And so that is the floor in which.
Yeah, we are, we'd be required to do it at least.
At least every two years. So when things are set in policy, it is basically the minimum standard and at any point you guys can change that.
Heather?
So the way I'm understanding it, the policy that we're approving actually creates a very broad umbrella. I mean, there's a whole lot of kinds of sponsorships, but that aren't, but only what's approved every two years by the board will be what we allow. So like right now, we couldn't have the first National Bank baseball team of Hudson High School. I mean, like, we don't have, cause, cause it wouldn't be in this document, so that wouldn't be one of the things that we would consider.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't, yeah, we, we, we wouldn't sell naming rights to our teams or our elementaries or anything like that without coming back to the board.
So this, so this document that we'll approve later would really outline what's available right now.
It's really, it's just the ability to sell advertising space is really what this is about.
And the, the process that's in front of you is not a document that you will approve. It's just the rates that you will eventually approve on that document that you're seeing.
So the procedures are just, this is how we intend to carry out your policy. And if, if there's an issue with that, then we can bring it back and say, okay, if we're not hitting how you wanted the policy to carry it out, then we can talk about it, make tweaks.
When will we be approving the policy? Cause I know we're on a fairly short timeline.
That, that's what we're asking. We're asking you to.
Somebody makes the motion.
So, yeah, to waive, making, we'd ask you to make a motion to waive the first reading and approve on second.
So, so moved.
All right. Take it, the motion is to, um, adopt the policy based on a waiving of the first reading pursuant to our other policy, which talks about, uh, creation of other policies. And, um, and to approve as, uh, the second reading here tonight and Kerry seconded Rob's motion. Another, um, clarification is the, um, this is not, as I was saying before, supplanting other fundraising and it doesn't prevent, um, somebody like three M, who has been very generous in the past in, um, making different donations and whatever to, um, whether it's science rooms or science, um, activities.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions then?
I did have another question.
Yes, Sue.
I didn't know if we had to do the vote first, but, um, Tracy, um, are, is there a different policy for, um, advertising with educational materials? Like if some tool company like Grainger has a safety film or something for students on tools and it says Grainger at the end? I mean, do we have a different policy for those kind of things?
That is addressed in this current policy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw that you had definitions along the lines of what I was talking about, so, all right. Any other questions? All those in favor then of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Uh, the motion passes and the policy is adopted based on waiver first reading and on second, approved on second. Then next action item is, um, the agreement for commissioning services. And, uh, Nick, who's going to introduce or talk about this?
Tim has a, uh, uh, present, uh, just basically, we're still, I think we're still somewhat in the negotiation, working through the contract.
No, this is, this is final.
Is it, did we get it finalized?
Yep, we, we finalized this one.
And we do have, just to give you a heads up, we do have budget in our referendum budget to commission. So, and this is right on target with what we originally were budgeting.
And then explain for those folks who, um, uh, haven't followed through before as far as what is commissioning when it comes to construction.
Essentially what, what it is in layman's terms, and there's people that know a lot more about it than I do, especially, you know, Rob or Tim. But basically it's, we have the set of drawings, we have the things that were actually installed, the equipment and everything that was installed. And, and then we have the specifications of how it was supposed to run. And this commission agent basically makes sure that the equipment's doing what it was designed to do, that kind of being a nutshell, Rob?
No, that's accurate, you know, and I'd, uh, if I may, I'd like to, uh, compliment Tim as well as, you know, Sue was there, uh, the others that participated. You know, typically in, uh, Wisconsin, if there is commissioning, you know, roughly twenty-five percent of all the equipment's looked at. And what we're getting here in Hudson is a hundred percent of our equipment, every single point, you know, every peripheral, everything that moves, both inputs and outputs. It's, it's going to guarantee a very tight and long-lasting system. So we, as a district, can be assured that it's, uh, functioning well. So kudos to Tim and everybody else that participated. I also understand that we're looking at the middle school network as well.
Right, yeah, we've, we've incorporated that piece as well. So, um, that question came up, uh, when we had our, our group meet, which was, uh, which was Sue and Rob and, uh, Jim Stayskull, Gary Ziffco from Kraus Anderson, Doug Skinner from Bray and myself. So as we went through the process, we interviewed three, three firms. KFI was, uh, really the unanimous choice amongst the, the group. And, uh, we looked at the potential of doing, what, what could we do for commissioning of the, of the middle school? Was that something that would be of value? And so I think as we, as we worked through, um, I talked with KFI a little bit, had them send us a proposal of exactly what they were talking about and what they might propose, uh, for middle school. That, so the fee, uh, for, the fee for the, for the high schools, a hundred and ten thousand. That includes all travel, all reimbursable expenses. Um, and they proposed a lump sum fee of fifteen for the middle school. So we'll also have the middle school on board. Again, it's, it's one of those things where, uh, you know, as Rob mentioned, if, uh, we have systems that aren't working correctly, they can cost us a lot of money over the long term to repair. And so this, this is a pretty in-depth look at all of those systems, making sure that they're working properly and testing them. And then having the contractors, if they're not, having the contractors come back and correct the systems, so.
So is this essentially, um, cause I noticed there's mentioning about attending bi-monthly, uh, commissioning meetings and coordination meetings. Would those be attended generally though by like teleconference?
They, they could be, but it's a local, uh, fairly local company out of the Twin Cities and they have an office here in Hudson. So they've got a local person that would, that would come over here.
All right. So that's, it's not like we have to fly people in.
No, no, not at, not at all. These, and these, I, actually all, all of these folks are local with either Hudson or the Twin Cities.
But the big, the, the big items, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be that they go through, um, at the end of completion of construction, but then they come back again just prior to that one-year anniversary of the.
And that's accurate. And to Jamie add on to, you know, what you've said, they're going to work with our mechanical engineering firm and make sure that the sequences of operation are appropriate and will provide best for performance for our systems. So there'll be some give and take, um, that will lend a lot of additional granularity, granularity to the systems that I think will benefit us long-term. So all in all, this is going to be fantastic, as Tim said, long-term, um, for our district, from a functionality and, uh, deferred maintenance, maintenance standpoint, long-term, great for the taxpayer. You know, but I, I also would like to mention that, uh, Robert Linder, who's the manager of the commissioning services at, uh, KFI, lives in Hudson, uh, North Hudson.
Right, yeah, uh, he's Holton, I believe.
Holton, um, so it's, you know, above and beyond even an additional benefit, knowing that his kids go to our school, schools.
Yeah, no, actually, as soon as you approve the contract, they're going to start work, uh, reviewing plans and doing those types of things. So they're, they're going to be involved throughout this whole process, not just at the completion and then at the eleven-month period, but they'll be involved throughout that whole process.
Mr. President, may I make a comment? The other thing that was impressive about them, uh, that my takeaway is they work real strongly to not just, you know, test the chiller or test the heating or test this or that. They really look at it as an integrated system. And, um, and like Jamie mentioned, they'll still be with us once we, once we say, you know, kids get in the door and we're operating. be with us, once we, once we say, you know, kids care in the door and we're operating, they'll still be coming and doing tests and calibrations and looking at everything, and I think that's a real plus for us, because it isn't like we just sign off that, you know, everything has been completed for heating and cooling, et cetera, and, and they gave an excellent presentation, and like Rob said, I think the fact that they're nearby was a strong factor, so that we, there's an accountability there that, but I just have one question to Tim, I know that the fee was lower than what I see here, and I'm sure it's higher because there were some refinements, can you make any comment about why that got edged up rather than going down?
Yeah, actually, the, the fee is combined for the middle school and high school is the same thing as what, what we saw in the proposal, so they had proposed a fee of about roughly $100,000 for the high school, and if we wanted to go towards the 100% testing, it was an additional 25, so we would have had $125,000 for the high school alone, so this one is 125, as we negotiate, as we negotiated with them, it's a total of 125 for both schools, so middle school included.
Yeah, and the proposal breaks it down 110 and 15.
Right.
But we're adopting both the proposal and the addendum with this motion.
Right, it's, it's really one document, but we have our own addendum that we add to it to protect the district.
All right, is there a motion?
Is noting the amendment necessary in the motion?
You mean the addendum?
The addendum, rather, with the contractor.
You're just going to approve the contract?
Yeah, it's, it's all one, yeah.
It's all one, we got a six-page proposal plus the addendum, but it's all considered one contract.
It's all one contract. Mr. President, I move to approve the KFI commissioning contract at the high school for lump-sum fee of $110,000, travel production expenses included, as well as alternate one, the middle school HVAC commissioning, for an additional lump-sum fee of $15,000, inclusive of travel and production expenses.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and the contract is adopted. At this time, I would entertain a motion to convene to close session pursuant to the statute language.
Mr. President.
And note that we are, we believe that we'll be reconvening to open session.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that the, we convene to close session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 parent one, parent C, to consider the performance evaluation of an administrative employee, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 parent one, parent G, for conferring with legal counsel for the Board of Education who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy be adopted by the Board with respect to litigation, which it is or is likely to be involved in.
Second.
All right, this requires a roll call vote, and we have an order. Brown.
Brown, aye.
Gerke.
Gerke, aye.
Hanson is abstaining, he's not here. Kattas.
Kattas, aye.
Logland.
Logland, aye.
Whitaker.
Whitaker, aye.
Johnson, aye. We are adjourned to close session.